Item number, let's see. Excuse me.
Mordi.
Yes, we will now hear related items 40, 43, and 73A through 73 together. Number 40, public hearing regarding the fair market value of the city of Las Vegas and owned vacant real property based on the current appraisal report in anticipation for the sale and development of 94.99 acres located at the southeast corner of Bonanza Road and Mojave Road. Number 43, R-50-2025, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution authorizing the city of Las Vegas to sell Desert Pines Golf Course for the purpose of economic development without first offering it to the public and for less than fair market value to Desert Pines Master Development LLC for the development of multifamily and affordable housing, for sale market rate, single-family homes, townhomes, recreation area, and commercial amenities, and execute the disposition and development agreement. 73, 24-0603, this is an abeyance item, on the following land use entitlement project request on 97.99 acres at the southeast corner of Mojave Road and Bonanza Road. 73A, 24-0603, GPA1, abeyance item from PR-OS, Parks Recreation and Open Space, to TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development. 73B, 24-0603, 0N1, abeyance item from CV Civic to TD, Traditional Development. 73C, 24-0603, DIR1, abeyance item regarding the adoption of the Desert Pines Development Agreement between the city of Las Vegas and Desert Pines Master Development LLC. 73D, 24-06031, VAC1, abeyance item, petition to vacate public right-of-way located along Mojave Road and bicycle path easements generally located along Mojave Road, Bonanza Road, and Pecos Road. 73E, 24-0603, TMP1, abeyance item, Desert Pines for proposed 17-lot subdivision parent tentative map. The applicant is Desert Pines Master Development LLC, and the owner is City of Las Vegas. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on the entire land use entitlement project. These items are in Ward III, Councilwoman Diaz. Items 40 and 73A through 73E are public hearings which I now declare open. Ms. Babski.
Good morning. Dina Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city of Las Vegas. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Today here with me, I sitting in the reserved row, I'd like to introduce our guest before I move over to our presentation, because we have been working with this team for a few years now, so we're very excited to be here at this point to move this project forward with your approval, of course. So, I'd like to just say that with us here today is Vincent Bennett. He's the CEO of McCormick Baron Salazar, our developer. Along with him is Dan Falcone, the President of Falcone Group. He works with McCormick Baron Salazar. And of course, Jennifer Lazovich, she will be presenting on the land use portion of the agenda. Without further ado, I'd like to start the presentation and just, I can't express enough how excited we are to present this transformative opportunity, the redevelopment, the proposed redevelopment of Desert Pine Golf Course. And it's not just about the redevelopment of the golf course, it's really about our smart land use, our intent to diversify housing options in Ward III and the greater Las Vegas community. We all know that, you know, we have land limitations for all of the region, but even more so for Ward III. There's really very little land left available for our housing and for redevelopment purposes. So with this proposal and this project, this is really a great opportunity for us, the city, to use a city-controlled land, especially of this size, 95 acres, to move forward our goal of expanding our housing offerings, as well as advance the city's long-term vision specific to the East Las Vegas Special Area Plan, that it will bring the affordable housing component, it will bring parks and recreation, education into the area. So all of these items, all of this vision is what has driven us back in 2022 to hire the Smith Group to put together a scope of work for their request for proposal to redevelop Desert Pines. Back in April of 2022 is when it was presented to city council, and essentially addressed all of the items I mentioned earlier for open space, affordable housing, mixed-use, commercial, and retail. We took that scope, and then we went out for an RFP. During their quest for proposal, we received multiple proposals, and McCormick Baron Salazar was the winning bidder. So within their current proposal that is in front, that will be in front of you today, is a multi-use redevelopment of Desert Pines. The project will deliver a minimum of 1,566 units in a mix of affordable, multifamily, mixed-use, for-sale townhomes, and for-sale, single-family residential homes. It also includes open recreation space, and also a proposed early learning center. As you can see on the depiction on the screen, the northeast corner is what the city is carving out from the Desert Pines Golf Course to reserve for future construction of the CSN Training Center. The CSN Training Center on the east side is going to be very similar to the one that is currently under construction on the west side. The city applied for the grant with the Economic Development Administration, with the federal government, and our application has been pulled for award, which is amazing. Their representatives will be here in September to tour the site, and then with that in mind, we're planning to have the grant finalized later this fall. Some of the renderings you see on the screen are conceptual product types that were submitted during the proposal, so that's something that, you know, that reflects the multifamily, the condos for sale, as well as single-family residential. I would like to highlight how much, how many partnerships are in place for this redevelopment project. The overall cost to develop the affordable housing component of the proposal is almost $1 billion, so $440 million. Nevada State Infrastructure Bank approved a loan for this project for $25 million to help with the infrastructure costs for Phase 1. Clark County Affordable Housing Funds were set aside at $8 million, that's from their Affordable Housing, ARPA allocation, to help fund the construction of parcel 1 for affordable housing. As I mentioned, the Economic Development Administration granted $5 million for the CSN Training Center that will be finalized very soon. The city, through the American Rescue Plan allocation back a few years ago, set aside another $8 million to fund the remainder of the construction costs for the CSN Training Center. And finally, what made this all really possible is the $6 million from the ARPA allocation by the city back in 2022 that helped us come to a deal with a golf course operator and revise the 99-year lease term for the golf course, which essentially made it now available for us to move forward with this very transformative project. And not to say the least, it's the actual land deal with the city that's going to make this project pencil and feasible. So let me go over about, over the details of how that will work. The city will sell the entire site, which is the 95 acres, to the Desert Pines Master Developer, which consists of 51% of McCormick Baron Salazar and 49% of their development partner, Urban Strategies. The purchase price is $17.45 million. It is a discounted price from appraised market value. With that said, the project was specifically structured that way so that in the future, the parcels that are planned to be for-sale, market-rate housing, and sold off to home builders, there will be proceeds generated from those sales that will then be routed back into the affordable housing development in Desert Pines. Another portion of the deal is, the land will be placed in a deed of trust under promissory note, so as developer gets ready to develop each individual parcel as individual project, they will pull down that parcel and transact on that particular parcel at that time. The reason it was done that way is specifically to enable the developer to apply for the Nevada State Infrastructure Bank loan, so as I mentioned in the earlier slide, that was awarded and approved. So with this deal structure, that's essentially how we're going to move forward. It is also important to remind you all that there is a Land Water Conservation Fund encumbrance on the site. Many, many years ago, certain funding source was used that essentially made the site restricted from certain types of development. We're currently working with the state and the federal government to have this encumbrance relocated to a different site, and that is planned to be completed at the end of November. The site, the whole site, 95 acres, will be developed in two phases. Phase 1 consists of 10 different parcels, five for affordable housing and five for sale. It will also include recreation and open space. Phase 2 of the schedule consists of the remainder of the parcels, which is two affordable housing and three parcels for sale, and one proposed early learning center. The development schedule overall, meaning the next steps, is first, we will address the land water conservation easement, as I mentioned, removed in November. The golf course operator will require per lease terms a six-months notice, you know, in order to finalize their work on the site. So with that timeline, we expect the redevelopment of Desert Pines to start taking place in June of 2026. With that, once that happens, then the very first parcel for affordable housing will break ground later in 2027, towards the end, with the last parcel in Phase 1 to break ground in 2030. Phase 2 will start following that, and the overall project is scheduled to be completed by 2036. So with that, I'd like to just summarize that this is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to do something this significant. Take 95 acres of city-controlled land and redevelop it into something that not only the future residents will be able to live and enjoy, but also the community around, you know, from the CSN Training Center, the childhood, early childhood center, all the commercial and retail. So there's really a lot of great things that will come from the redevelopment of this site. And before I invite our developer partners to come and speak, I'd like to say a few words of gratitude to the departments that were involved in pulling all of this together. City Attorney's Office, specifically Sandy Turner, Jim Lewis, they were just doing everything they can to bring us to this point. Our Community Development Department, Peter Lowenstein team, and not to forget our own redevelopment division in EUD, Tracy Reich and her folks. So we're super thrilled, we hope for support, or ask for support, and then with that, I'd like to invite our developers to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Babski.
My name is Vincent Bennett, and I'm the CEO of McCormick Baron Salazar, B-E-N-N-E-T-T. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Protem, City Council, for the opportunity to partner with the city. And special thanks, Councilwoman Diaz, for your vision in bringing mixed-income development to the community. I've been with the company over 32 years. The company's been in existence for over 50 years. And since its founding in the early '70s, the focus has been not only on public-private partnerships, but really focused on places where families and children can thrive. We focus on a quality, mixed-income approach. Resilient housing is key, but also places where families and children can be resilient, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Over our 50 years, we've developed in 24 states, over 54 cities, including Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands. And we've helped in many of these places, states and cities, develop a model. And tools differ from state and locality, but the financial engineering towards public policy goals remain the same, in terms of providing places where families and children can really grow and thrive. And what that means is thinking about attainable and workforce housing, where there's a housing ladder for both rental, homeownership, and there's a way that we can support our families. Joining me today is a representative of Urban Strategies, Julian Wyatt, and their focus is not to deliver human capital and social services, but is really to work with local partners in delivering best practices, and also through their experience, bring in national foundations. So the key for us has been leverage. How do we leverage private debt and equity with local and state resources and put together a financial model that will test time? You know, we need to really focus not on the short term, but over decades, and really create a community that's operationally sustaining. And so what we do through our financial leverage and strategy is, one, identify what the priorities are of the local agencies, public policy and other, and then lever up the private debt and equity with other resources. And so leverage is key. And so one of our goals through this approach is we have a national partnership with the parent company of Summit Health Systems, Centene, and they've brought resources to really create an opportunity to do early stage and increase the velocity of work. And so they've committed $3 million to date to really advance some of the work, early stage, and we're hopeful that that can also lever human capital strategies. And so for me personally, over my 30 years, it's not about the great buildings, and the buildings will be great, the community and the physical infrastructure will be great, but I think it's, how do families and children thrive? And for us, that's been our philosophy. So I'd like to, again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to turn this over to Dan Falcone, who I've known for over 30 years, to talk through the specifics. But the approach to mixed income has been demonstrated in many places across the country, and we look forward to the opportunity to partner with you to establish, really, not only a demonstration, but a focus on how this can be done through communities throughout this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and council members, and especially Councilwoman Diaz. It's been a bit of a road here to get here, but all good things are worth a good travel. So we appreciate the opportunity, and, you know, one of the things that, for MBS, they developed about 25, over 25,000 units, and as I like to say, we put about 60,000 people to bed every night. And so with that, we try to take lessons learned, and they're always lessons that continue, and apply them to the next project, and make sure we're doing a good quality innovation and making sure everything works together. You noted from staff, the original plan that was developed by the Smith Group was one is a great plan, but we looked at it and we said, okay, let's analyze this and bring some of those lessons learned, and some of that experience, and say, what does it do, and how would it interact in the neighborhood that we're going to be developing in? And one of the things we recognized was, the plan had a lot of units, but they didn't quite match what we see the demographics for the community. And so we took a step back and said, you know, rather than doing about, you know, two-thirds of the project as studios and one-bedrooms, which was the original plan, we said, let's flip that around. And so we ended up with about two-thirds of the project with two- and three-bedroom units. Did a few less units, for sure, because of space needed, and about one-third are for one-bedrooms, and we don't have any studios on the site. So it's just trying to align things a little bit better to reflect the community that we're going to be working in. And as part of that, we also looked and said, okay, what can we do with affordability and create that ladder of opportunity for folks? And so we have committed to at least 593 units of affordable housing. Our goal is to do about 999 to get there. A lot of that will depend on financial capital and financial engineering to bring things together, but we know we can do it at minimum, a certain amount, and at least half the multifamily rental units. For-sale units will be at market rate, and not to mean that folks have to make always market income, because we'll be working what they call soft seconds to find, it's the financing structure, that financial engineering, so that folks that may not make as much can still live there, and we get them, work with them to get them grants and soft dollars so they can live in those, and buy those homes at market rate. And we do that also to protect the community, because we've learned that homeowners that might be in the area aren't going to be happy if they go to refinance their house and find out that, hey, a brand-new house down the street's selling for, you know, 30% less than your house, so sorry, your value just went down. And we don't want to do that. We want to uplift the community, and not just what we're building, but what's surrounding us. And so we make sure that things sell at a market rate, and bring the financing resources to families that may not earn as much, but still care about their neighborhoods and still want to be homeowners invested in those neighborhoods, and that's what we care about. In that, we also bring in tremendous public leveraging, and so as noted, we have worked with Treasurer's Office and Treasurer Levine and State Infrastructure Bank to get that $25 million and secure that. So that's critical to be able to bring forth all the infrastructure. And at the end of the day, we're looking at making sure that those opportunities for folks to live and bring in the mixed income, and also, some of those lessons learned in operations go to how we ensure selection of tenants, how we ensure the outreach is done correctly, background checks are done for residents. We want to make sure that people care about the neighborhood, whether they're renting at low income or whether they're home buying. The markets aren't going to be left to their own just to see what could happen. We want to make sure that things are done correctly and work together on that. As noted, the project will be done in two phases, so we look forward to that. I won't go into a deep dive, since that was already discussed, and I wanted to take a second to go through, again, recognize and thank staff. I started doing my list, and I stopped at 20 names. I said, you know what, I better not go through this. Recognizing time and period, but I do want to thank everybody that worked and all the individuals that were there. They've been noted, or will be noted, so I appreciate that activity and that, all their time and bringing it together. Also note that we will be working with a project labor agreement to bring in union labor on the site, so we are committed to doing that, and that'll be involved in all the infrastructure, as well as the multifamily construction. So that's, we look forward to working that, and have worked with, and have an LOI with the Southern Nevada Building Trades Council already in place. So all that is in place and coming forward. I'll turn the specifics for the land use over to Jennifer, and let her make that discussion.
Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today on behalf of McCormick Baron Salazar. Just a couple of minutes, and yes, I am going to be the person that takes the extra time to go through all those individual names, because we met on a bi-weekly basis for the better part of two years. It was a lot of time, and we wouldn't be where we are today without the steadfast support and vision of Councilwoman Diaz, which cannot go understated enough, that her vision and her team, in knowing that this was the right thing for her community and for the city of Las Vegas as a whole, has been truly amazing, and we thank you very much for getting us there. Ms. Babski showed you this plan. I'll touch on a few things just quickly. As Dan mentioned, we're going to be developing in phases, with Phase 1 being closer to Bonanza and this area, and then Phase 2 coming closer to the freeway. The different colors represent different types of development within the community. As noted, it's a mixed-use and mixed-income project, so the first kind of, out of the gate that you'll start to see, we will need to come back through for individual site plan reviews, so you can see what it's going to look like, but we anticipate that that will be in the purple. Those are mixed-use buildings. One of those buildings will be affordable seniors, and then we'll have, of course, in the other buildings, the mixed income. As you move over towards Pecos, you have commercial along with the Nada Part, which is where the CSN portion of the development will be. And then parcel 10, I think this is important to note, this is our recreation area, our open space area. That combined with the trail that moves along Cedar Avenue, as well as other open space areas that we have within the community, is about 10 acres of recreation space that we will maintain for our residents, for the city. In the yellow areas is the homeownership, and as Dan mentioned, that's a key component to this. It's not just a rental project, it also has that mixture with the for-sale. So we have concepts for both single-family attached and single-family detached. And then as you come over into this area, you have more multifamily with the opportunity for possibly an early education center, if we can make that work. Back in December of last year, we did our required neighborhood meeting, but we have wonderful team members who helped us really spread the word, and we just didn't do one neighborhood meeting, which the required one was on a Thursday night. We did a Saturday meeting as well, because people may be working and may not have been able to get there. So we did an additional meeting on Saturday, which actually got more people there, and I would say all comments or questions that we got were very positive in nature. We certainly didn't hear anything negative at the planning commission, no opposition of any kind, and planning commission did recommend approval. One thing that, on a personal note, I have never had the wonderful opportunity of representing a project quite like this. I have learned a tremendous amount, but probably the best thing that I did is that early on, before we really started the process with your city staff, we, in combination with your city staff and Councilwoman Diaz, went to California so we could see, what do these projects look like? When Vince or Dan talk about, you know, this is how you live, it's how you live, what does that look like? Because it's easy to look at a piece of paper and say, well, these are the different colors, but how does that translate in reality? It was an eye-opening, amazing experience. You would not know that those were mixed-income properties and projects when you walk through. Beautiful tree-lined streets for walkability, there was homeownership mixed with rental, and everything was, just coexisted beautifully. And it was a wonderful introduction, at least from my standpoint personally, to see what the vision of what this project could look like, seeing it in reality for myself in one of their projects, which was in California. So I'm going to wrap up with the thing that everybody has been avoiding. I certainly hope, this is like an Oscar speech, who do you think? I certainly hope that I capture everyone's names. Some of these people have retired, and I'm still going to name them, because they have been part of this project for the past couple of years. So in no particular order, I'd like to start by thanking Mike Jansen, Dina Babski, Tracy Reich, Jonathan King, Rich Atkins, Peter Lowenstein, Seth Floyd, Fred Solis, Lucian Pyatt, Sherry Shoup, Chief Nolan, Sandy Turner, Jim Lewis, Rosa Cortez, Joey Paskey, Arcelia Barajas, you had mentioned Treasurer Conine, and then retired and no longer with us, but that started on this project with us, and certainly provided valuable help and insight is Tom Perrigo, Bart Anderson, Alan Ricky, and Steve Ford. And then the final thanks, again, goes out to Councilwoman Diaz and her team, steadfast support, her vision for this project is what got us here today. So with that, I think we would all be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Can we turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein for staff report first?
Peter will have the last word.
Thank you, Ms. Lazovich. Peter Lowenstein for the record, so Mayor Protem and council members, thank you. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all the parties involved in making this project come to fruition. This project has touched all levels of government, from Washington DC to Carson City, to our bi-weekly meetings that we've had for quite a while. To achieve such took a large effort from a lot of individuals inside and outside the city, and I would like to say thank you for that. This project has a long planning history, starting with the adoption of the Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan in July of 2021, then the city council's adoption of a resolution adopting the Desert Pines Vision Plan in '22, and then, once again, the city's adoption of the East Las Vegas Area Plan in June of '23. This project is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of those aforementioned documents, as well as conforms to the applicable NRS requirements for development agreements and mapping actions, as well as all Title 19 requirements. With adherence to the development agreement and the associated development standards, this community will be consistent and compatible with the surrounding area, and as such, staff is recommending approval of the development agreement and all associated entitlement applications, and is requesting the city council's approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lowenstein. And this is a public hearing, unless there's any other comments from the team here? Okay, I'll invite the public, if anybody has anything to add or question. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public comment period. I have a few questions, if it's okay. My first one, Mr. Salazar, since you're standing here, the state recently approved a significant chunk of money to go towards affordable housing. Do you all mind talking about, is the city doing everything we can to help allocate that funding? Are we working with our private sector partners to allocate that funding so we're competitive within the city of Las Vegas? Or is there anything else that the private sector can do to allocate that funding?
Yes, yes, thank you. The program is, and legislation is drafted, is very promising. Actual working program guidelines have not been adopted yet. So we anticipate using that funding, and it would align perfectly with the mixed-use concepts that we have. So my answer is, yes, we plan on using it. Yes, we believe it will be beneficial and available, and certainly we're going to incorporate it. Ultimately, guidelines will help us define how it will be used, and we'll make sure it can work within the development.
I appreciate that answer. Maybe we can help draft some of those guidelines with the state of Nevada. That would be helpful to we.
Glad to give insight, if I can.
We'd love to get some of that funding into the city of Las Vegas. And Ms. Babski, I have a few questions for you, if that's okay. The first one, and I ask these questions in briefings, I just think they're important for people to understand. The first one is, within each site on that map, they have to finish completion before they go on to the next site, and they pay us as they finish.
Right, there has to be, Dina Babski, for the record.
Dina Babski, for the record, there has to be progress on the first site, and then as they become ready to develop, the next site is when they come to the city with their proforma, make sure that all the financials are in place, capital stack, and then they move forward with that parcel.
And the funding that comes from our partners will go into the city's general fund?
No, it will not go into the city's. So you mean like when the parcels that will be sold as market rate, any proceeds from that sale is going back into the construction escrow account for the affordable housing? The $17.45 million for the land, that's the money that will go back to the city's general fund?
So $17.45 million going back into the city's general fund because of this sale of land?
That's right.
Thank you. The other question I had is, as a service provider, working with affordable housing, you guys, the team provides client services and management services of those properties? Or is there other partners involved?
There's two parts to that question that you asked. There is property management, and MBS does property management internally through their management company. They will be involved. And the social service side, we will look to provide services, and our partner, Urban Strategies, will look to identify local service providers and help draft the scope of services for each particular property and depending on their specific needs. For example, program services for seniors will differ from program services for family housing. So they align those services for each property and then secure the right partners and financing to help, funding to help that work.
That's a great answer. Thank you very much. Are there any questions up here on the council? Any comments?
So I just want to say, I'm so proud of you, Councilwoman Diaz. It gives me courage and hope that if you worked on this this long and you're going to make this move, that there's hope for us in historic West Las Vegas and other areas of Ward Five. When I spoke to Ms. Jennifer yesterday, I said to her that this can be done, but we have to be intentional about it, and we have to believe that there's more than one way. We can't do things the same way we've always done them and expect that we're going to meet the needs of our community, which is miles larger than it was when I came here in 200, well, 1990. We have more people, we have more need, and we have to be innovative, which is one of the things that you said in your comments. You also talked about lessons learned, and we know that we've had a crisis of home for, since 2020 at least, and we know that we've got 90,000 people who make 60% of the local AMI or less. We are 90,000 units short. And if you open that number up to folks who make about 120 to 150% of the local area median income, you're well over 200,000 homes short for people to be able to have affordability. Your project gives us hope and hopefully a template so that the people in this community can cease to be afraid of their neighbors. We have a big problem with NIMBYism here. People are afraid of the word affordable housing. They think it's going to affect them disproportionately, and we need folks to understand that your neighbor is the person you sit next to in church, the person you go to synagogue with, the person you go to mosque with, it's the person who's mixing your coffee, it's the person who is checking out your groceries at the grocery store. They all need housing, and if we're not intentional about how we do that, those people are either going to be homeless, which no one wants to see, or they're going to lose, they're going to leave our community, and then we have another problem altogether. And so I'm really, really proud of you, Councilwoman Diaz, and I'm proud of your team, and I encourage other developers in our community to pay attention. This is the future. This is where we're going to be fighting for in every, well, I can't speak for anybody else, but for me, in everything that happens in Ward Five, this is what I'm going to be fighting for, so that we have a comprehensive and inclusive template for housing. And I thank you all, and I'm really, really glad to see this.
And then I would, before I pass it on to Councilwoman Diaz, I would just say, in all of our briefings, what's been consistent is the vision from Councilwoman Diaz, so thank you for bringing this, what is a catalytic development into our community. And for Mr. Jansen, a whole bunch of people's names were read prior to us voting, by the way. It should have been after, but it's the team of Las Vegas that's really taken what is a growing challenge in our community and put forth an effort that is a solution. So we should all be incredibly proud of this effort and proud of the councilwoman who's leading it. So I will turn it over to the Councilwoman Diaz to make our motions.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, and thank you for your kind words, my colleague from Ward Five. This is Christmas in July for me. A really long Christmas coming. I can tell you, we started to have conversations about this vision in '21, and then we started to have to hash out the details of how this vision, this pie in the sky, this very innovative, intentional, value-added, master-planned, community project happened on shy of 100 acres left in Ward Three that I rarely get to see. I'm not privileged, like some of my other colleagues, who have large swaths of land still undeveloped. I am very much infill, like some of us in the urban city. And so obviously, I want to say first and foremost, thank you to the public, to my residents. They helped us craft this vision. So if we didn't hear housing was a necessity, if we didn't hear education is a priority, we wouldn't have had the Holy Grail that made this vision come together. So I can't take all the praise. It really is the residents of Ward Three who participated, who made this happen. Let me take a minute and gather, because it's a lot. I want to say thank you to all of our amazing city staff, who, when we threw everything in the kitchen sink, they're like, let me figure out how we make this happen. Let me figure out what angle we can take, what funding opportunities are available. I want to say, oh my gosh, ARPA dollars couldn't have come at a better time for us so that we did have control of this site, and we're still holding our fingers and toes crossed for the last few hurdles to be met, but we feel fairly confident that we will achieve it and then be able to put this landholding in the appropriate hands. Know that we had to basically go back and forth, back and forth, hash things out. I want you to know that we're taking a huge leap of faith as a city in this space. I don't think we've ever trusted this magnitude of a project to believe that we can offer a mix of affordable and market-rate housing, that we can provide families like mine the opportunity of first-time homeownership, and then that builds generational wealth for that family. For them to, if they had to leave high school because of unforeseen economic circumstances, they can go back to our Education and Training Center and get their career back in check, whether it be a trade or advanced manufacturing or whatever other workforce need, we're going to plug into our East Side Training Center. Then we have, you know, open spaces that we know that we lack on the East Side, and I held these people's feet to the fire over my trees and greenery and making it beautiful because we want to mitigate the heat island effect that we suffer from every summer increasingly on the East Side where we lack it. So they never said, no, we're not going to do that, or it costs too much money. If anything, they are a proponent of keeping the spaces beautiful and inspiring, and they want people out there walking their community and building that camaraderie amongst their neighbors. And so I just want to say, wow, this is a first momentous step. I know that there's still so many more steps to follow, but I do want to say bravo to McCormick Baron Salazar for always saying, we can do this, and we can do it in a way that will be something you're proud of, Councilwoman, not just when we first build it and have people move in, but 40, 50 years down the line, because we promise that what we build, we keep up with, and we're going to maintain to the highest standard and quality. And so I want to say just thank you. Thank you to Ms. Lazovich, who's been there from the initial tour, Mr. Lowenstein, who has sacrificed countless years of his life. On the planning side, I just want to thank also the Smith Group and Erika Aviles for opening our minds initially to the possibilities and getting that feedback from our community. It's very important to me that people see me as a responsive public leader and servant, that I am listening to what you're telling me, and then I'm figuring out the how-to, and sometimes the how-to takes four years in the making, but know that we are listening and we are hammering and chipping away and working on a plan to hopefully bring what you're telling me is a great need. So I just want to finish by saying, I'm so proud that we're bringing different levels of housing or different kinds of housing needs to the community. Commercial uses in there, workforce development is in there, short-term and long-term employment opportunities will be located on Desert Pines Golf Course and Early Learning Center. I'm hoping, I'm keeping my fingers and toes crossed. And then obviously, our Education and Training Center, which I feel is the first presence of higher ed on the East Side, where we know our educational attainment levels need so much love and watering and support to make people retake certain pathways so that they can be making a better living and be less stressed and not have to have three jobs to make ends meet. And so with that, I am ready to make my motions, MPT. So I'm going to move to approve, no action is required on Agenda Item 40, so I'm going to move to approve Agenda Item 43.
We still have more to go. No clapping yet. More to go.
That's the first one. And then I also need to move to approve Agenda Items 73A through 73E.
And there is a vote. Please vote and post. And that item also passes. All items? And if it's okay, there's a bunch of staff that worked on this. If you're in the audience or up here or down there, if you're able to stand up, just so we can recognize you, this is monumental for the city of Las Vegas. Let's celebrate you. We are building community to make life better. Thank you for being our partners. Let's continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will now move on to Item Number 41.